Heavenly Father, as this holiday season comes upon us, please let us remember that you gave the blessings to you, the men and women that sacrificed to give us our freedom. And please be with everybody in our county as they go to and from this weekend and to and from this week. You know that you are in control of everything. Please with those that are suffering from cancer, suffering from sickness, and just the ones that have lost loved ones this past week. We ask all of these things in your son's name. Jesus may be with them.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the highest states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much.
Discussion, all right, you got my list kind of minutes.
All fair. Payroll forms.
Better than the sign? Sorry? Run from last year. Next week I'm gonna lapse last year's money over and so then we'll be able to do the draft of last year's. Every month. And I thought you need to change that because that's real just not good. And they tell me it hasn't that long. The strangery. Go back.
Can you get through the paperwork?
Yes. Look back on that one from Hamburg. Says District One on there.
District Two.
What's the one behind there? Is there a hole on it?
District One.
Yep, I see it. Okay. How about ours here? I'll make a motion we accept that in those. All fair. Blanket purchase order.
Blankets from the sheriff, District Two, and fairgrounds.
There. Payroll cover. Payroll cover. So a few calls this weekend about they have to pay to have their cover cleaned out. No, you don't have to pay anybody. You can call one of the commissioners here for the District One's office. We'll clean them out, so you don't have to pay anybody.
I don't carry roads.
No. Yeah, it's in our right of way. Yes, you do not have to pay anybody. Clean your cover out. You can call us and we will do it. Letter of support from U.S. Department of Transportation's EV Program Investment Program.
There's two letters there.
They both the same?
No. I think they're not of them. I think it's just people that really aren't going to.
Did it sign anywhere on?
Yeah, on the blanket page here. Just you sign it. And let's all three of them, why all three of them sign it that way? Shows what you're really like.
We should accept the letter of support. All fair. Lease purchase contract, ACV Bank, District Two.
Mike, there's one place we do the sign on the back of the all three of these signs. We get so many on the office phone. I mean, and it's all recorded and it's hello. Hello. Oh, you are there.
I wish we could accept the lease purchase. All fair. Can I get a copy of that?
At least that. Yeah, I sent to.
Okay, you already sent.
Yeah, I sent it to her, yeah. I told her that you wanted a copy of the CODMS, but I can send it again if she doesn't want it.
Sales agreement with Warren County, District Two, Skidsir.
Did I skip the transfer?
Where did I skip?
Was Dale.
Transfer District, yes, sorry. Transfer District Two, Mano.
Oh, I got myself out of order.
Uh, my bad.
I need to just sign my fair, Mike, and then all three of you.
Sales agreement with Warren County, District Two, Skidsir.
There are like one, two, three, four spots to sign my purchase. Yeah. There's two in the Richard and Mark.
All three are signed on that last page.
Either that or the first page or something, just to show that it goes all through them. Thank you.
All fair. Resolutions for certification, letter for unpaid rescue.
I didn't read any of them either, looking away.
Do we all three need to sign the back or anything?
Um, no. Yeah.
All fair. Uh, American Fidelity with Luke Keenest and Premed Defender with Joe.
Brennan?
Brennan.
Brennan.
You guys?
How's it going, commissioners? Uh, my name is Luke Keenest. I'm with American Fidelity. I don't know if you want me to stand here or what you want me to do.
I printed like the difference between the high and the basic. Do you want me to hand those out so everybody?
Oh, can, and I've got a couple of handouts. I'll give them to you and Joe can kind of go a little bit more in depth on the, uh, the history. Kind of like this high level, what we do and then the current counties we work with, state. And then just the information on our services and costs. There's a lot of information to make a document too. Very high level, American Fidelity. We are a supplemental insurance provider. We're an Oklahoma-based company. We're privately owned, been in business for over 60 years. We work with counties and a bunch of other entities, but specifically on our county side, we like to serve as a benefit, an extension of HR, you know, benefit staff in helping do benefit education for the county employees. We come out and we work with your employees directly to help them make sure they understand how all the benefits that you offer them work so they can make an informed decision and help them navigate what options are available to them and make a smart decision for them and their family. We also offer supplemental insurance as well, but it is really secondary to the benefit education piece. Everything we do is geared toward making sure your employees understand what their benefits are. And then as far as the sell side of things, it's kind of taken care of because they're getting educated and making smart decisions. All of our employees, this is Darren McKelvey. He's one of my colleagues. We are salaried employees. We have company cars, so we are not 1099 employees. So we are, have no, we're not forced to sell anything, basically. So it is really based on making sure we are doing our job of educating your employees and then understanding what they have. And hopefully that in the backend helps with retention and people staying around longer and being good employees. Everything we do on the county side, we are the endorsed supplemental provider with ACO. We do it for free for the counties. So we have a benefit enrollment platform that we enroll everybody in. We can help with your health choice side and help in educate on the medical plans because we understand them very in depth. That's where Mr. Brining comes in as well because he offers a service that I've been involved with, with the CUP for the last couple of years. It is a huge cost saver for the county as well, and I'll let him talk about that a little bit more. But we know the health choice plans inside now. We help plenty of counties with them coming in this time of year. So we can help them navigate which plans to choose and make sure they understand how their deductibles and things like that work and hopefully eliminate some questions and into people being confused on the plans and how the plans work. We have no participation levels, any of the supplemental stuff, and we offer everything from short and long-term disability, term life, whole life, accident, cancer, heart and stroke coverage, things of that nature. Again, that stuff is all voluntary though. It's very stable. We haven't had price increases on any of our stuff for like 20 plus years. So it's very, very stable. The things we do free for the county, the benefit enrollment platform. So we, we serve as our group's compliance officers. So we do your Section 125. That's more Lenita's area of expertise there, but we help make sure we're keeping you compliant when the auditors are here. As far as pre and post-tax benefits go, everything is in line and there's no catches or, you know, no surprises on that end when the auditors are here. We have one sheet that every employee gets a copy of that shows every pre and post-tax deduction they have for medical dental vision, supplemental insurance, so they can see what's coming out of their paycheck. That's our big thing. We want them to know, hey, this is what coming out and you're gonna see us every year and you get a refresher on it so you know what you're doing. The whole purpose of supplemental insurance, I believe, is to use it. So we want, if you're gonna participate, if you're gonna have an accident or a life insurance policy, you know how to use it. Your family knows that it's a baby, that it's there to take care of them, things of that nature. So we're here to re-educate every year and make sure they're doing that. We offer flexible spending accounts, health savings accounts, independent care accounts, and we do those all for free. And we also insure all the risk for the county and front all the money. So I don't know if you guys are familiar with Flex accounts. I don't remember, y'all don't do Flex now, right? So Flex accounts are a great tax savings device, not only for you guys, but for the employees as well because it helps lower on the county side payroll taxes because anybody that's putting money in the Flex account, that is all pre-tax dollars for the employees and they can be used on medical expenses that come up during the year. And typically, an employer would have to front that money. This year, the IRS will allow somebody to put $3,200 in. So if you had a employee, put the full, ask for the full $3,200, you would have to front that money on January 1st. American Fidelity does that for the counties for free. So we front all that money so it's not a budgetary item for you and we also insure the risk. And that means if somebody spends the money and quits, you don't have to worry about paying that back because the employees pay that through payroll deduction monthly. We insure all that for the counties though. So if somebody spends that money and bells, the county's not liable for it. American Fidelity will eat that money. So it's no risk to the county, but it is a huge benefit to your employees for people to have regular out-of-pocket medical expenses because they can use that money as pre-tax dollars now versus after-tax dollars. If you're offering the high deductible plan, we can also do the health savings accounts, which is very similar to Flex, except the money goes in monthly from the employee's check. So there's some cost savings tools we do as far as the supplemental insurance, but the big thing is education. We will be here every year. We bring a team of enrollers in. They're all salary account managers. And typically, just high level, how we do most counties is every morning, it's usually a three-day enrollment. We go to a barn every morning and meet with your employees at the barns and get them enrolled usually 6:45, 7:00 a.m. Get them out of there so they can go work, work within the county offices to get each department done and then work with the sheriff and the under sheriff to figure out how we're gonna meet with the jail staff and the sheriff and meet one-on-one with the employees and help answer any questions they have and get them enrolled and get them signed off and have a signed election form that you guys can refer back to and that they can refer back to year after year. And then they know our faces and names and they need help on the supplemental side of things. With that, everything that we do, we just ask for exclusivity. We want to be your sole source of supplemental insurance because we are not just coming in here to sell products. We're not coming in here to beat another person just trying to sell your guys' stuff and lining up a bunch of different vendors trying to sell them stuff that your employees forgot what the heck they signed up for and wonder where the heck the paycheck went. We want to make sure they're getting the best benefit for their dollar and they're not confused and they know how to use it and they know who to call if they need to use it. So you're, currently, we work with 39 of the 77 counties. You guys will be our 40th if you want to work with us. As far as Mr. Brining, I talked to Lenita. He offers a service that works with the Health Choice Basic Plan that essentially between the cost of Health Choice Basic and his plan and the Choice of Health Choice High, it's roughly saving, I'll let him go with like 51 bucks a month. So the way you guys do your benefits now and paying for the employee on the coverage, it'd save you guys a ton of money. And I'll let Joe go into that a little bit more in depth after we finish here. We would love to work with you guys. We, I've got everything set up on the backend that if you guys want to vote and work with us this year, we'll be ready to go next month and have everything ready.
Also means, don't need to interrupt, but this also means like Washington National will be there, Aflac will be there.
So we want to have an option.
Basically, you'll still have an option, but it's just gonna be with these guys. But if they have those plans, they'll be grandfathered in. They can still do that. The AirMed and that stuff, they can still come. The AirMed and the survival flight from Alba.
That's totally different.
Right, yes, right.
And I wouldn't make that point. We're not asking you to kick anybody out as far as current coverage because there are situations even when we meet with somebody, because we will preload even like your Aflac bill and all those others. We will load those in our system because of us being the compliance officers. Like, we want to have it in there so we see they have an Aflac accident. We're gonna talk to them and we're gonna compare price and benefits because there are a lot of situations where somebody needs to stay on the plan they have already. If somebody has an Aflac cancer plan and they've had it for 10 years, one, I'm probably not gonna beat their price, but if they've had any pre-existing situation going on, they need to stay on the plan they're on. If they've got a life insurance policy they took out with somebody else, I'm not gonna beat that price because they don't get cheaper as you get older. So we're gonna do what's right for your employees. Over time, some of that will whittle down. That's natural. We started working with Stevens County a couple of years ago. They had Aflac for 20 years. And there's a bunch of people that still have it because it's what's right for them. And then there's some that changed over because we can save the money. We are cheaper. We don't have commercials. We're not paying Coach Saban to yell in Sanders. So we're cheaper and we're privately owned company too. So we're gonna do what's right for the employees, but they will have everything on one sheet and they'll know and will know, hey, you already got a cancer plan. You can do a life cancer plan from us. So we're gonna do the right thing for employees. That's the only piece we ask. We're not, the way our business model is in doing, bringing value, we don't want to be sitting here trying to sell against somebody else and not knowing what they're doing and it being a surprise on the end of January, somebody coming in saying, where's my paycheck at? Because I've bought too many policies and didn't realize it. So that's the only thing we ask is exclusivity. But otherwise, we're your free employees all year and we'll help as much or as little as you need us to make sure your employees are educated. We will also help with new hires. We'll, we're here 365 days a year to help you guys and be your compliance officers and help you enroll every year. So that's what we do. And I'll let Joe talk a little bit before y'all make any major discussions or anything because what he does is a huge saver.
So you currently offer Health Choice High. And so a lot of times, Health Choice High is the option because of co-pays and it's $750 deductible. But if you have a surgery procedure, you're still gonna have those out-of-pocket costs. All right, so Premed Defender is secondary insurance. It's like grandma's MedSub. It's, you have two insurance cards. So the way it works, and we pay directly to the provider. So you go to the doctor. The doctor processes your claim through Health Choice. You get an EOB that says you owe X amount of dollars. That doctor turns around and files the claim with Premed Defender. Same claim form, they just attach the primary EOB and then Premed Defender pays that patient responsibility. It runs through the network. So the question comes up, how, what's, you know, how do you do this? And then it will, the claim systems work, but also our risk is pretty low as far as, because we're on the hook for $4,000. That's, that's our risk as an insurance company. We don't work with Health Choice High. We pair with Health Choice Basic. Okay? So the different, the first time you go to the doctor, there's gonna be different because you don't have a copay. So you're gonna see that your doctor charges $150 for an office visit. Health Choice is gonna negotiate it down to $123, all right? Health Choice is going to negotiate it down to $123, all right? Once that $123, that's going to count towards your out-of-pocket, but then that doctor's going to send it in that, to us, and we're going to pay, turn around and pay them that $123. That's your patient responsibility. Sometimes there's issues with claims, like mental health. Sometimes with mental health, the therapists do their own billing, and so they might not know, be familiar with secondary insurance, and they'll go ahead and turn around and then they'll give super invoice, because that's procedural codes, to the member, and we turn around and reimburse the member. All right, so the question is, is why, you know, so this is my fourth, fifth, going on my fifth opening enrollment. So we've been doing this quite a while, but because we're not a core product, it's hard for me to get the word out to the different benefit coordinators or HR folks. So it's just me going out, you know, working with Luke on some things like this and then basically saying, this is going to save us some money. So what I did was, we just got a pricing for 2025. All right, so this is the pricing for 2025 rates. So if you look at the first column, it does, it bases on employee, employee spouse, employee child, employee spouse children, which would be family, employee child, and then employee children. Then, if you look to the right, that is the cost for Premed Defender, all right? So it's $90.67 an employee. So when we add those two together, that comes at $655.39, all right? So we compare ourselves with Health Choice High. Health Choice High rates are $707 a month. So actually, it's a savings of $51.61. And then you can kind of look at the various savings, like a family is going to save $110.85 if they're on the family, which being employees, spouse, and children. Then in the middle grid, we compare ourselves, we don't, in Western Oklahoma, we don't have HMOs, so it's a lot, you know, but if it was an option, you could kind of see the different pricing of what's available through OMS. But you'll look at, and then down at the bottom, if you'll kind of look at Health Choice Basic, it has, Health Choice pays the first $500. After that, it's $1,000 deductible, just like we talked about going to that doctor visit, $123 is going to be paid by Premed Defender. Then we're going, after we get that $1,000 deductible, then Health Choice says 50/50. Health Choice pays 50%, patient responsibility is 50%, but we're going to turn around and pay that Premed Defender, we'll turn around and pay that 50%. So we've eliminated that $4,000 out-of-pocket. The prescription benefits are the exact same, so members not have taken any sacrifice on the prescription benefits, so it's, you know, they, but basically, we've eliminated their out-of-pocket, so we zeroed their out-of-pocket for medical expenses for the year unless it's not covered. Health Choice doesn't cover it, then by contract, we're not going to cover it, but I know that gastric, two years ago, we paid for gastric bypass, because it was, the banning was approved by Health Choice, so we paid that patient responsibility. So, but these are the rates, and so then therefore, it's a per-month savings of $51.61 a month per employee. We've worked with several counties, you might call Sherry at Stevens County, you might call Casey.
Kaylee at Stevens County and Sherry at Carter County. They're the two counties I worked with that has put this in the last two years. Carter County's had it for two years, and they have, they blanket did all of their employees on it, because they only offered Health Choice High before, so they just blanket moved everybody over to this, because it was, at the time, saving them, that first year, I think, like $46 or $40. So that's going up. So for you guys, essentially, if you're covering, I don't know how many employees you do. Yeah, I mean, if you save 90, if I was rounding down, it's about $4,500 a month in savings. And the whole thing on this, this is not my plan, but I believe in it, because my whole thing of bringing, trying to bring value to you guys, that's why I brought it to two counties that I worked with previously, is it's going to save money and then your employees don't have to worry about out-of-pocket costs. That's now gone for them. They don't have to worry about, hey, I could have this $4,000 bill come out of nowhere. Joe's plan is going to eat that up for them, and it's saving the county money. So that's, that's a bunch of money back a year that it can save you guys. Again, Carter County did everybody, but they only offered one plan. Stevens County last year started offering this. I'd say 85% of them switched over. There are still a few people that stayed on like the high deductible plan, because they wanted the HSA or had an HMO plan, and they had somebody, a doctor they loved. But my part in this is the education piece, and we build this into our enrollment platform to gather the census data and get it to Joe, so that he can just mass set everybody up on the back end, and we're not having to worry about signups and getting socials and all this crazy stuff from everybody. So it just streamlines the process for you guys and for Joe, if this is something you're going to offer as an.
It helps that, have that one-on-one, going to explain, at least for my product, have that one-on-one, because then they're familiar with the product, because a lot of times, I hear, well, it's too good to be true. I'm like, no, it's diversification, you know, we're not under risk for liver transplant or something like that. This is just our exposure of that $4,000. So I think that's, that's kind of nice when someone has concerns or, you know, we've got a bunch of lives that are, say, this is what we want to take a look at, and I think that one-on-one does help immensely, so. Also, I, these are last year, and we are with the retiring program, so if someone does retire, they can do it. I wanted to, this is the brochure, and there's, this is this year's rates. So if you do go to okpremed.com, there's some testimonials. We had a big market penetration with the Highway Patrol. I know that Broken Arrow Schools is adding this, Lawson School's had it. It's kind of interesting, I got Stevens, one of the commissioners, his wife taught at Comanche Schools, so I get a call about halfway down the road, and she says, my husband said I need to take a look at this, so I had to go back to Comanche and, you know, kind of educate her on that. So it's, it's available to anybody that has Health Choice, and so it's just me and the rest, 77 counties and community school districts.
So is that $50 a month per employee per month? Or?
I think when I went to Carter, it was, it was the last week before open enrollment, and they, this is exactly what they did. And they figured that it's pre-taxed, so there's another factor.
They saved, yeah, they saved like nine grand a month, because they have a few more employees, so, I mean, over a year, that's a lot of money saved.
Yes.
So the supplement, I didn't get the paper, so does, does it have a max that's going to pay a year?
$4,000.
So if you have something major happen, you're going to.
Health Choice is going to pay from $4,000 to a million or two million.
50%?
No, 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 that's your, your total max out-of-pocket for Health Choice Basic is $4,000 as an employee. That's it. That's, that's the risk you have.
Currently, it's $3,000, because you're on Health Choice High. So that's your cap, but if you stay on Health Choice High and you don't have this Premed Defender on the basic, you are still potentially outworry grand.
And a lot of times, if you're going through something, you don't, it's 30 bucks for a copay, if you're going through therapy, well, if you go 10 sessions, that's $300. With this, we're paying, there's no copay, there's patient responsibility, that it's on the EOB. So it's getting educated on, you know, I don't have a copay anymore, I have secondary insurance. That's the term you need to use, like, it's very common, secondary insurance is very common, especially like a divorce, a husband and wife are required to carry insurance on that child, whose ever birthday is first, that's primary, and whoever birthday is later in the year, that's secondary. So then they turn around and file with the secondary insurance. So if you use the term gap, a lot of times, the collections people or the people that do the billing aren't familiar with the term gap, but they know secondary insurance very well. And in northeastern Oklahoma, it's very common with health, Veterans Administration, things like that.
So like, some doctors don't take Health Choice, so what about this Pre-Defender?
We're going to pay, we will pay, like, here's an example, with this physical therapist, her doctor will not file any insurance. She charges $150, the negotiated rate for the PPO is $123, okay? We pay the $123. So if they're, I can't do anything about the balance billing or whatever, which is what that is, but we're going to pay whatever, whatever Health Choice says is a fair rate, that's what we're going to pay. So even though they don't take it, do they still bill for it? There's kind of two things. In other words, when a doctor says, I'm not going to take it, that means they're not going to accept what Health Choice pays for that $123. My work is worth $150. But if they make you file your own claim, and then we're going to pay you whatever Health Choice says is your patient responsibility, which will count towards your deductible. Because you're out-of-pocket, it's a state and network, out-of-network, it's four grand.
Sure.
It's basic. It's different with High, but for Basic, it's.
I just know, my husband tried to go to a doctor here not long ago, and they didn't accept Health Choice insurance, and so he had to find somebody else.
If they don't accept it, then the next question would be, do you still bill for it? You know, that, when they say they don't accept it, that just means they're not going to accept the PPO rate.
Or do what you do, go to a doctor that accepts something.
That's right. And it's, yeah, because they're going to say, you were talking $10, $20 an officer, something like that, but that's just the way that a doctor provider wants to do it. There's always ways to work around those things, and it's just mainly being able for the member to call and have some concerns, because you're, with the automated billing systems, they'll, it's like a tractor, they'll run over you with paper if you don't turn off the switch and shut the engine off, right? So just having those conversations of how to speak. We send out videos on how to talk to a provider or their billing office, saying, I see you filed this with my primary insurance, I need you to file with my secondary insurance, and since we're on a recorded line, I need you to mark it as insurance pending. That stops that in 30, 60, 90 days. And then that comes into us, we turn, because it has the tax ID and everything, the doctor, we turn it in. So we can't pay off an EOB, an explanation of benefit, that form you get from Health Choice that says this is what you owe, because it doesn't tell us the doctor's tax ID, and it doesn't give us how we pay them electronically, because they'll have like a little account that we can bill and pay, so. Yes.
So do most, any doctor's office that takes Health Choice understand the supplement? And so we don't have to do anything except for here's our.
Just when you look at, next time you go in there, if they have an iPad or whatever, when you put secondary insurance down there, you just need to say, this is secondary insurance. There is some disruption at the beginning, sometimes, like we had a chiropractor in Fairview that was having some issues. It would be, it wasn't consistent, there would be four months of proper billing, and then there would be one month where it wouldn't happen. And so finally, we called the, it's the chiropractor's wife that was doing the billing and said, hey, we need you to send in the primary EOB. And sometimes it might be the fact that, you know, you have to get on the phone with the billing office. I mean, it's not all rainbows and unicorns. There's, sometimes there's an issue, but at the end of the day, you know.
You're saving money.
Yeah. My thing is like, I, you know, I was teaching and coaching, I would be more than happy to get on the phone and to pay off, have, you know, one of the kids, you know, whatever the bill was, for the few minutes, and, because how many lawns can I mow to make up, you know, the $4,000? You know, that's, that's a big deal. And it's, you know, with young kids from the Department of Transportation, they look at, they said, if I get a motorcycle wreck, what's my cost? I'm like, zero. It's okay. He's 28 years old.
I'll give you one more quick example, just kind of the relationship here, but at Carter County, a couple of weeks ago, I had a lady call, she had cancer, she had cancer plan with us, so she was calling to talk through how she needs to turn in a cancer claim. She's a little reticent, because people think supplemental insurance is like car insurance, and we're going to raise your rates. That's not the case. File your claims. But because of the relationship, and I know what their medical plan is, when she's explaining to me that Integris, she has a bill she's going to pay, and that's why she needs to file a claim with us, because she had a $2,200 bill from Integris, red flag for me is, you shouldn't have any bill, you know? So I messaged Joe to reach out to her to help her take care of that, and he's like, yeah, I'll take care of it, you know, and get it taken care of, so now she should not have any of that out-of-pocket expense left in her deductible. Plus, she's going to get paid from American Fidelity, so she's going to come out ahead, because she's going to make money off of my plan at this point. So that, again, that relationship here is that I know these plans, so I can help people if something comes up or they forget, you know, they're not missing a step or something, and we can catch these things and make sure everybody's financially taken care of.
So you're telling me that knee surgery shouldn't cost me four grand?
Right. Right. Exactly.
Sorry, man.
One year too late. But yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, this is all about making sure employees get the most benefit out of their buck. You guys, you're a rural county. You've got to watch your dollars, you're trying to get, you're trying to keep employees, you know, you can't pay them a million bucks a year, but if you can save them money on the back end, and you can save the county money, give you more skids to your money at the end of the year, you know? So that's what we're here to do. And I will say, rather, if you don't decide not to go with American Fidelity, hope that's not the case, but you can still work with Joe. Like, we're not a package deal by any means, but try to make Joe's life a little bit easier. Plus, I believe in it, like, I would fall a little backwards, so I have the money out-of-pocket. I've got sick kids all the time, and I keep me my out-of-pocket max every year on a high deductible plan, so it's not fun.
And I think just the benefit of having them come and having them talk to those employees, instead of just coming through like cattle to me going, no change, no change, no. I mean, I have people all the time going, they'll see the bottom of their stuff going, I thought you said we weren't paying for anything. Okay, the bottom of that is what the county pays, the top of that, I mean, it just shows them how much the county is paying.
Yeah, we build that in, so they see employer costs, because they think, well, I'm only making $35,000 a year, but really, county's paying $600 a month, $700 a month, that is your total compensation package. You got, they need to understand that, because they could think there's greener pastures down the road, and they don't realize, oh, I got to pay for my insurance now, you know? I had that happen to, lady went from Carter County to Johnston County last year. She got a pay cut all of a sudden, didn't realize it, you know? She saw more per hour or more, you know, but her, she had to pay for her insurance then, you know, and all of a sudden, that's a pay cut, and you're driving 45 minutes every day, so.
Those forms do help, but he's talking about your payroll, because I, this is, when we did Rogers County together, so one guy, so I was going to make a little nervous, he wanted, he came back, he goes, we talked about Premed Defender, it was great, then he comes back and he looks at this and he goes, you mean, they're going to take another $1,000 out of my check or something like? No, no, no. I said, you know, hold on. So I think having that little sheet on there is so helpful to make sure they know exactly what's coming up.
They either going to grumble and they have to sit down one at a time and do that, but I think they'll understand so much more.
Be easier.
How much the county is.
It's really very quick, like, how many guys do y'all have at each of your barns?
Eleven, twelve.
Yeah, I mean, we're out of there in less than an hour. It's not a long process, because we usually are bringing two or three account managers in there, and we just set our laptops up, they stand there with us, or we sit down at a desk, so they see everything we're doing, there's no surprises, they sign their name at the end, and they get an email, or we can print an actual confirmation for them, but they see everything. It's, it's pretty quick and easy. And in a few years, they know all of our names, and they're ready to go, so.
I think the main thing is if we have somebody that's going to hit their out-of-pocket, I had, we have some members that hit their out-of-pocket by February 1st, so they're having some serious medical conditions. I think we want to be proactive, so if we know somebody's going to be going through something, or like a baby, and we had a little girl for Attorney General's Office that was having a baby, and she wanted to make sure everything was taken care of, so we try to be proactive and call those providers, so they don't have that awkward moment of, I've never seen that. But we're getting with, with the Highway Patrol, and, you know, I think that kind of gives us a broad net where the providers are starting to see it more, and then with a lady on the ceiling that, you know, has been using it for, she's been with this for, since day one, so she's had pretty good run with it, too, so.
I think once you get in there and do it, like, your doctors, mostly, you go to see the same doctor all the time, so they're going to understand.
The state line won't affect any of this? Okay. I'm going to call my guy's doctor.
Wherever Health Choice, wherever Health Choice, I know a lady, she had a kid in Maryland, and that was a concern, and when you cover wherever, Health Choice covers, we're good.
I will thank you this, this is just.
I got, I got one of them. I got, I got one.
That's our, you know, proposed language. We first used this at Jackson County, as far as resolution language, to be your single source provider. Obviously, can change anything you want if you decide you want to go with it, but that's fairly standard, what we've used in the past. We also use that to help you when people come calling to, you know, say, hey, we're your provider, we do this for them, blah, 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 and, you know, can help beat some of them away, unless you guys simply want to do some money.
So how did you do the new hires, then?
Couple ways. Obviously, if we can be here in person, we'll try to be here in person.